All right, thank you everyone for being here. Tonight after Election Day. And just like to congratulate all the winners. And a special thank you to, a special congratulations to our very own Billy Villa, our new City Court Judge.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach held Wednesday, November 7th, 2018. At 7:00 PM we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendo?
Present.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice President Diamond?
Here.
President Ronald?
Here.
Let the record be stated, the presence of the President of the City Manager Michael Tagley and Corporation Council Richard Barry. We will now move to the floor.
Councilwoman Ward?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the City Manager for the update.
On Saturday, November 3rd, four separate incidents involving a suspect in vehicle with a BB gun were reported to the Long Beach Police Department. On Saturday morning at approximately 12:07 AM, three women walking together near the Woodwalk Ranch at Nagoya Boulevard Waterway were shot at with what is believed to be a BB gun. Two of the three women were struck, but no injuries were sustained. Later that night at approximately 11:54 PM, three separate incidents over a four-minute period involved Yeshiva students, who were also shot at what was believed to be with a BB gun. The first and second victims at Nagoya and Beach Street and Riverside Beach Street respectively were hit, but did not sustain injuries. The third victim at Riverside Boulevard on 10th Street was not yet. The vehicle identified by the victims was a doggone SUV possibly, and Nissan. We ask anyone that may have information on these incidents to contact the Long Beach Police Department, dialing 911. The police department does not rule out any polished possibilities, including whether or not this was in fact a hate crime. However, at this time, it is thought that the suspect was a person who exercised a bad judgment, targeting anyone that was outside the area. As a precaution, the department will continue in its control of all housework and action it had taken as a shooting at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh last week. On the evening of Monday, October 29th, hundreds of persons gathered along with multiple elected officials, women and religious leaders, rabbis, and community members to light candles, join hands, and participate in prayer, and mourned with those who lost in attack on the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh. Thank you to everyone who came to stand with us in solidarity against Haiti. The Joint Veterans Organization, cooperation with the City of Long Beach, will host the annual Veterans Day commemoration ceremony this Sunday, November 11th, starting at 10:30 AM in City Hall, right here on the 6th floor. All are welcome to the tenant. The City of Long Beach Department of Parks and Recreation will hold their 14th Annual City Campus Turkey Trot on Sunday, November 18th, 2018. There will be two races, a 1-mile race from age 17 and under, and a 10K. Find out more for information at www长 beach NY dot gov. The National Critical Infrastructure Security and Resilience Month is November. This month on our Facebook page, in an effort to build more awareness of and appreciation for the importance of critical infrastructure, the city will be highlighting various infrastructure projects that the city is currently undertaking. Plans for the future, work that residents and businesses have done to date, as well as tips on what you can do at home to help make our city safer. In line with this need, we acknowledge construction of the Emergency Operations Center is underway adjacent to the council chamber. The project is expected to take six months to complete. Upon completion, the Emergency Operations Center will provide the necessary capacity to coordinate emergency operations in secure locations with connections to backup power. Public Works Crew will be flushing hydrants to this tonight until Wednesday, November 21st, between the hours at 19:00 AM and 5:00 AM. For more information on the flushing program, please visit www长 beach NY dot gov slash Public Works.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, you can call the first item.
Item number one, resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into contract for recently worked at various locations throughout the City of Long Beach on an as-needed basis with the lowest possible bidder.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Seeing no hands, next item.
Item number two, resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into contract for asphalt overlay work at various locations throughout the City of Long Beach on an as-needed basis with the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay. Commissioner Miranda, could you just speak to how the roads are chosen? I know we've gone over this before, but in case someone missed that. And then the difference between an overlay and a complete road reconstruction?
Certainly, we go through all lists of roads that are in bad shape, and obviously there are a number of them. With the overlays, we look for roads where we do not need to do major work on utilities, or at roads where utility work has already been done in the past. But we have not picked any roads as at this point. Some of this money we might actually use on some of our projects where we've gotten grants, and this will match the grant. And it's also important to note on these, this $400,000, we get this money back after we spend it from the state through the CHIPS program, which goes into our revenue account. So, we have, as I say, we have not really picked out any particular roads that... And the contract is a requirements contract, so we bid, there's 20 different items in the contract, and as we go through and start picking roads, we start picking the items we need. So, the contract, you know, at that time will determine how much each project is costing, stay within the budget and amount that we, we asked for.
And do one road deteriorate more quickly because of underlying damage, basically just sand?
Not necessarily. Roads tend to deteriorate from flooding. They deteriorate from freezing in boring action during the winter. When you have cracks in the road, what gets under the base, when it freezes, it lifts the road, and it's more, more in that area that we, we see it. Most of the roads along the island are built on sand, and a lot of our, some of our older roads don't have a big base, they have really very little base. So, we redo a road, we redo the base, so it has a better support and, and then that helps.
And how much time does an overlay, additional years, does an overlay generally give you on a road?
Generally, probably give you 25 years, depending on the road. If it's a heavy traffic road with heavy traffic, not as long. If it's a side road, side road, if it's with traffic, it's not as much, it'll last longer.
Thank you. We'll just wait a second. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public, about roads at least? Nope. Okay, seeing no hands, vote. Next item.
Item number three, resolution authorizing the use of funds from the City of Long Beach will be funded.
Yes, they said, due to our salt air and intrusion and the rough weather we had in Long Beach, our Christmas lights, well, holiday lights, take a beating. And a lot of them needed repair, and the repair would come to $16,000.40.47. And the city desires participating in the holiday season, so I am suggesting that we transfer funds out of the relief fund to pay for these lights so that we can have a festive holiday spirit.
Commissioner Tagley, is there any element of this making it time-sensitive?
Absolutely. It's, right now, our Christmas tree license scheduled for November 30th. If we don't do this tonight, we will not be able to repair all the lights and put them up in, in that time.
Yeah, I just want to go back to the concept of the relief fund. For many of our residents who are here, if someone could just briefly explain the purpose of the relief fund, that would be helpful to our residents.
And where?
Yes, the relief fund is, where we put the donations that we received from Billy Crystal and the others during Hurricane Sandy. The program is the relief fund, it can be used for recreation and any public works projects.
Will it be funded by donations?
Yes.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Ms. Goodman? Good evening. State your name and address, please.
Monica Miranda, Long Beach. President Ronald, I'd like to thank you for Sunday's Crystal Mount commemoration and for acknowledging that you're a former City Councilman. Just thank you. Would you be able to tell me how much money is in this fund before this extension?
Approximately $170,000.
That's a lot of money, to be said in one month. Because Sandy is so terrible.
Some idea of the...
I'm sorry, some idea of the...
Some idea of the... An entrance to the beach to, in honor of Billy, now, the Crystal, the relief guy.
Beginning of the boardwalk, right?
Well, they have all the footprints here.
Oh, I see. The eastern, eastern.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Show of possession. Please state your name and address, please.
Hi, me, Heshon, Long Beach. I don't want to be the Grinch, but I think we are so broke right now that maybe it would send a message into the city that we don't have the money for Christmas lights. I love the Christmas lights, but I think there are an awful lot of people in town who don't know what's going on, and by seeing no lights up, they may question what's going on and find out that we're broke, and I don't think it's a bad thing for people to know that we're broke. It's a very visual reminder to them. Also, the relief fund could go towards recreation. I remember Billy Crystal saying something about that. But also public work projects, and, I don't know, $16,000 is probably a very scary amount for a, a big project, but there's so much that we need in this town right now, between pie holes and, and all of the projects that need to be done, that I vote no on this $16,000 going to lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, please.
Allison Hetchat. I sent you all an email, I'm just gonna kinda go over that a little bit.
And Patty sent a really great response, I think answered all your questions.
Don't worry about it. So, we have a local development corporation and economic development department that could be working in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, civic associations, and other stakeholders to offset the full cost of lights in the downtown area. Furthermore, there's an arts council, which I believe there's a paid staff member on, as well as we have an events department that's paid. Has anyone up here thought to task an employee, intern, or volunteer with raising funds or finding appropriate sponsorships for the cost of these lights, and perhaps a little more to offset the cost of electricity? Which could, these lights could remain up year-round to really highlight a vibrant downtown. Now, I did receive an email response from Patricia Bourne regarding all of this, and I must give credit to Patricia, because she consistently responds in timely, professional manner. Thank you, Patricia, I appreciate that. And, you know, we did receive wonderful, great contributions after a superstorm in Sandy, allowing the city to expand the holiday lights, in addition to donations received this past summer to underwrite costs for the July fireworks display and the summer-long concerts on the beach. But I am concerned that we do not have donation and holiday partnerships already in place for this season, not because Patricia or the events department's not doing their job, but because you're not doing yours. I'm looking at all of you. These annual happenings should be set up and good-to-go months in advance, not a month in advance. And that falls squarely on your shoulders for not having a city manager in place. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Show of possession. Please state your name and address, please.
James Lynch, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. I got here once again late, I didn't know this meeting was gonna pull along as quickly as it did. I'm not exactly sure if you wanted to just give me a quick update, to the percentage of the lights that had to be replaced and so forth, because as you know, I was very well. Getting the lights down in the western of the chamber, and we partnered with the city to get the lights on Park Avenue, and that was a good thing, right after Sandy, when we needed that, we were shopping on, trying to break things back and beautify things. I don't believe that money should come out of the general fund. If this is, if this is money that's coming out of a donation and has not been used and has been sitting around, I don't have too much of an objection to that. What I do, or what I would like to know, is why do we spend the money exactly on? Is it for the lights in Kennedy Plaza, or is it for, because, from my understanding, when we first partnered with these and get these lights up, that we were buying all these lights, but they had a lifespan of 10 years. We're four years in, so these lights all should be good. I can understand that some of the brackets and so forth and so on have to be replaced from time to time, but could somebody give me an idea of...
It's my understanding, because I have some of the same questions that you have. First of all, with regards to your question, after which fund it comes from, we are taking it from a donation, if it's transferred into the general fund, but it is from the relief fund, which, as was discussed before, was part of the donation after Sandy. It's my understanding with regards to the actual lights that it includes, certain lights, brackets, and my understanding based upon my discussions with some of the beach maintenance folks who handle this, is that a lot of it is the brackets, which ends up being a safety concern, because obviously you don't want something to be up on a pole and then fall off because the bracket isn't working. So, it's not, it's my understanding, it's not every single light, but it is, there's a number of them that need to be replaced, but a lot of the cost includes the brackets as well.
Okay, so I'll, once again, I'll ask the question, because you, it's in a resolution to replace the lights in city, in Kennedy Plaza. What percentage of that are we talking about? Because I know of course there are these brackets, and it's not $16,000. So, do we have some, some idea to sort of, we can get a clear understanding, because when we're spending that kind of money, given the financial situation we're in, it's a concern to everybody. And if we knew this was a bit earlier, you know, the chair is always willing to work with the city, and we do, and, and we'll come up with these, you know, along the way, but now time is of the essence. So, what, what percentages to replace the lights here, and how come we have to replace them every year? I don't want them replaced every year, it's not just out here, it's along Park Avenue, West Beach Street, and the Woodwalk. Some of the lights, you know, I've purchased things over the course of my life that had more warranty, and then, or longer, lights, expectations, that didn't measure up, and this is one of those cases. The LEDs are supposed to replace them, or maybe they are, but some aren't LEDs, I don't know, and I have no idea of the percentages.
How did we get to this number?
The superintendent of beach maintenance went out and identified all of the damaged property, sent out a request to, I believe it's Festival, the, I'm not sure of the company, and they gave back the price of $16,000.40.47.
And who's doing the actual labor, superintendent?
We will be doing that now, and we will be putting them up now. It's not, it's not the labor, so, and we appreciate the city's partnership in doing that, because it does mean a lot to the businesses, it does create a vibe, and, and a beautiful look in our business district. But I'm confused about what lights are down. Because the resolution...
Are the ones that hangs on, hang on the poles?
Correct.
And the ones that hang on the boardwalk?
Okay, but here, here's the issue, how did they get downed? Because the ones on the boardwalk were bought after Sandy. The resolution says that they were downed as a result of Sandy.
But the resolution specifically says it's not just lights, it's lights, fixtures, brackets, and other accessories, so...
Right, so, all I was asking was to sort of break that. So, if that's not available, if that could be, because I spend a significant amount of time in the chambers, put up a significant amount of money, and we'd like to continue to do things, and things need to be refurbished, and actually, we should have some type of a, a fund going forward, that, because it's, it's part of what makes the Long Beach look beautiful during the highway. So, if someone could get back to me with that information, so that I can convey it to those, and all those donations that came in to put up those lights originally at Sandy Avenue, I appreciate it.
Just for purposes of clarification, can you just, I just want to understand this, are you saying that as a member of the chamber, that the chamber was not involved in this process, that the chamber was not asked to participate in providing funds or assistance with the lights that are, that we have presented in this resolution?
No, what I will say is that the chamber was involved in purchasing half the amount that was spent on, on Park Avenue, and I think the chamber put up about, somewhere about $17,000, $18,000, and businesses and donations went into the west end lights, so that was something. And, interestingly, we all know what this town looked like. And it, it was a great thing to see this come back up and, and, and look good, and make the town look good. Regarding this, I don't, it's suspected that, or expect that the chamber should be involved in, in this process, it's a maintenance issue, but my question is, why are we doing this much maintenance on lights that, that to me, and you know I keep a good look at them, because I was worried it's far from getting up there, they all seem to look like they are in good shape. And I know Mr., uh, Mr. Lynch, your time, your time's up. It's obviously closing, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, John Moran did a beautiful job refurbishing the lights in the west end with LED bulbs, if they were lights even wrong the last year, so we appreciate that. But if you could get back to me on that information, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other on Christmas lights, paid for or by donation? Nope. Okay, seeing no hands, next item.
Item number four, resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing on an application to the Off-Street Parking Requirements, 143 East Park Avenue, Street Floor, Long Beach, New York, Early Childhood Center, Plague Jim. This item is for publication only, a hearing will be held on November 20th at 7:00 PM. We will now move on to the voting. Who would introduce and move the adoption of item number one, resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into contract for recently worked at various locations throughout the City of Long Beach on an as-needed basis with the lowest responsible bidder. Who will second?
I will.
The Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
I vote yes, but I would just ask the commissioner to continue to make every effort to ensure that the work is done, in half to the extent that it can be.
And President Ronald?
Yes.
Item number two, who would introduce and move the adoption of item number two, resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into contract for asphalt overlay work at various locations throughout the city on an as-needed basis with the lowest responsible bidder.
I will.
Who will second? Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Ronald?
Yes.
Who would introduce and move the adoption of item number three, resolution authorizing the use of funds from the City of Long Beach relief fund?
I want you to table this, because I still need additional information.
Who will second?
You're seconding the tabling? Are you calling for a second on the table? She wants to table it. She wants to table it, yeah, so...
It is a motion for table, I, we have additional information.
It needs a second.
Who would?
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Being that there's no second, call it in to do.
And, so, who would introduce and move the adoption of item number three, resolution authorizing the use of funds from the City of Long Beach?
I will.
One second?
I will.
Councilmember Bendo?
This session, if you're right, if this was coming through the general fund, I would agree with you entirely right now, but since these are donated funds, we're in a little bit different situation than this Blanchett. As to your comment, I agree with you, but the time that would probably take to make this happen may include us from getting lights this year. So, but, that being said, for next year, I would agree with you entirely. So, with that, I vote yes.
Councilmember Mandel?
I echo some of the comments Councilmember Bendo said, I think those are some great suggestions, and going forward, we, we should and will look into alternative funding sources, but as time being a factor for this.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, I'm just checking my calendar here, it looks like we have another meeting on November 20th, which means that we do have another meeting, where we could have additional information, therefore, at this time, we want to vote no.
Vice President Diamond?
It's my understanding that if the lights were not purchased now, that I can't wait until the next meeting. Regardless of that, I want to thank our beach maintenance supervisor for doing an analysis of the lights that we currently have, as well as the safety of the current brackets and other things and fixtures that are used to ensure that the lights are up. I think that the lights that we have throughout the city are a way of bringing the vision of folks to the community, they stay and use and, and go to our restaurants, it brings actual joy to so many people throughout the communities, so with that, I vote yes, and I look forward to seeing them.
President Ronald?
Um, this is exactly the type of thing that donations should be used for, and I'm happy to go yes.
Who would introduce and move the adoption of item number four, resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing on an application to the Off-Street Parking Requirements, 143 East Park Avenue, Long Beach, New York, Early Childhood Center is for publication only, hearing will be held on November 20th. Who introduces?
I will.
Tagley?
I will.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Ronald?
Yes.
Before we close the meeting, I'd like to bring more items up, if I could. It's a little bit, I guess, out of deja vu, but for a couple of weeks, I have been trying to get some documents from the city and have not had any success in fitting them all around. I think the ethnic city manager may be familiar with the documents I'm referring to, and I would like to ask for some assistance with this, in getting these materials, it's been two weeks, I've got a little bit of this. I'm asking for official city records, and I'm not quite sure what I am, not getting these things.
I believe you were informed that the records do not exist in the city.
Unfortunately, I do have, what I was provided was a cover page, so, for the benefit of those in the audience, our Corporation Council was, apparently entered into an agreement that defined his separation payment should he leave the city. And I'd asked, and then it was a supplement to that document that came out in 27... And I'd asked, and then it was a supplement to that document that came out in 2017, and I've asked for those documents and I'm not getting it. I was given a copy of the cover page of the supplement, which says under Sherry James's signature that the full agreement is on file with the corporation counsel. So the document exists. It says so, and I don't understand why I'm not getting it.
There is no document in the corporation counsel that would define it.
The corporation counsel informed me, which one of you should--
I know, I'm standing here, but if this is a personnel matter, I have to advise against just carrying this on the base.
It's, well, that's a personnel matter, I'm just trying to get that to the station.
In fact, if you surprise the council, typically we don't speak about personnel matters on the base, with the exception of maybe like a settlement of a lawsuit or something like that, right? Partially because it exposes the city individual members of the council to--
We can't hear you.
Play into the mic, please.
My only caution is that if this isn't a personnel matter, that these things aren't typically discussed after the meeting, whether the corporation counsel or any other employee of the city of Long Beach. The reason being is that these types of discussions could expose the city to liability. So to the extent that it is about a personnel matter, I would probably get discussing that.
It's a contract. It's a city contract. So what would you advise then would be the course for appropriate documentation?
If you wanted to discuss that, I could probably--
Can't hear you.
If it's something you'd like to discuss after the meeting, I think--
I can't hear you.
To your knowledge, you don't have a search address in the meeting, but if it hadn't, could we? I don't--
He probably doesn't.
Speak up!
We have an audience out here, we can't hear you.
I don't know. What do you know?
The city manager's monthly personnel report has been filed by the city clerk. Who will make a motion to both meetings?
Sorry, I'm on my way. On the monthly personnel report, and I know that I can imagine you not having it in front of you, but I just went through the last two months and did a spot check on some of the positions, and that people that they've appointed into positions have salaries that exceed the amounts that are in the budget, in some cases by over nine thousand dollars. In addition, there were three positions that stole one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars that weren't in the budget at all. So I'll send the information to you, Rose, hoping you get information on how we intend to take these.
Councilmember Bendo, I agree that it's important that we understand why the monies are where they are. But there's another question here, and that is, why are we not informed about these appointments? Why do I have to get this in a package without a conversation? We're responsible, we need to have information. Access to information is critical so that we can move forward. When we fail to do that, then the credibility of the entire administration is at stake.
Since we have been on the council together, hiring and firing has always been at the city manager's discretion. And we have never, we have never had conversations about appointments, about grade changes. But we have never, it never occurred when a position like Commissioner Miranda was, we had the courtesy of meeting him and making sure we were happy with him. However, we have no say in whether the city manager hires him or not. But we have never, we've always just received those packets.
But there's been courtesy in terms of certain positions, as you said. I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay, okay.
I'm not disagreeing with you at all, that's my point.
I'm just saying that this is how it's always done--
Believe it or not, today, we're actually on the same page.
We're on the same page. More often than people think, we're on the same page.
If we could rather not talk in the air traffic, Councilmember Bendo would mind--
I don't know.
Who will make the motion to both meetings?
I'll make the noise, I'll help you.
Second?
I will.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Darn?
Yes.
President Ron?
Yes. Okay, before we enter our good one fair, which as everyone knows is three minutes of my interrupted time, we'll answer questions if we can, if we can't, we'll get back to you. The council worked together on a statement over the last couple of days, and I'm going to read it right now. And like I said, this was work done by the entire council. It is our priority to make sure that the city council, as well as members of the community, are informed in a timely manner about issues regarding health and safety. The council met Monday, November 5th, 2018, to discuss protocols to ensure proper and timely communication between the city manager, the Long Beach Police, the council, and the public going forward. The city council is committed to ensuring that the information that is important to our community, including health and safety issues, is provided quickly to both the city council and the community. And that's it?
Right. Ms. Fran Nielsen, the Honorable Fran Nielsen. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Fran Nielsen, from the Department of State, Long Beach. I think it's an interesting thing that you just talked about, health and safety. And I just wanted to bring something to your attention that I previously gave in contact with Commissioner Kenz about. The building next to the gym, New York Sports, has been worked on for, I don't know, they started construction there a while ago. I'm not a building inspector, I don't know anything about what you're allowed or not allowed to do, but the work that's being done, I feel like there is danger to the public. He had sent inspectors down one time. Today, they were shoveling glass around, there was glass all over the ground from the building. They're working on the building with open floors, you know, like whatever they're doing up there, there's no protection around it.
Next to the sports club?
Next, yeah, building next to the sports club. So I just, I believe it's, you know, I'm always at that gym, and a lot of people kind of been out of that building a long time, so I did bring it to your attention, the building department. I believe they are addressing it, but I don't know if it's only the building department. I don't know what should know about it, so I just want to give my attention.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. The Honorable Mona Goodman.
Thank you for the honorable.
You served the description, right?
Okay. So last meeting, I didn't sign up for the welfare, and at the end of the meeting, I was disappointed that I hadn't, because the gentleman, I don't know his name, turned the governmental meeting into almost a political rally. In fact, you'll figure it out. We need to keep these city council meetings as governmental meetings. That's the function. So if someone who may follow me this evening decides to create a different environment, I would ask you to stop, stop that speaker. You know, one of the most, I'm glad you worked together and came up with a statement about the hate crimes. And Commissioner Tagg, I'm very pleased that you stayed here for good welfare. If you listen to the news, oh, I'd say maybe for the last six weeks, maybe, the news is talking about hate crimes have increased exponentially. And when I read in Newsday that Police Commissioner Tagg says, ah, it's probably just kids playing around with the BB guns and incidents, you know, I have the time, it's so disappointing, and it makes my blood run. You can't poo-poo hate crimes, because it's not just the Jewish community, it's the black community, and it's, everybody is vulnerable if some-- I can't find the right word. If some people decide that they're more important than other people, and they're just going to do what they think. This is really very serious. My father, when I was a young kid, and my father said to me, I'm so disappointed in you. That hurt me more than anything else. Sorry to say, Mr. Tagg, I'm so disappointed in you. And then, you make it worse, because you didn't inform the city council members, or so they say. And you didn't inform the community. As a matter of fact, at the last city council meeting, you know, you were supposed to say, the next city council meeting is going to be Wednesday, the Senate, because of Election Day. But no, I realized my time is ending, but I just want to say, this is a very serious thing that is happening, this hatred. And we have to all together work to make sure that this ends. You cannot slough off hate crime.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodman.
Mrs. Goodman, thank you for your comments. I think we all share the same fear and trepidation in times today. We're all under heightened awareness, which I think makes even more crucial, if something is a hate crime, to categorize it as a hate crime. But even, even more so crucial, to not rush to categorize something as a hate crime until it's investigated. So I think there's a balance. I think not only Long Beach, but other areas are trying to seek that balance. These are new times. But all of us, I'm sure, if we could agree on anything, we're all concerned in these things. And the city police department is investigating it. I'm sure they're doing it in the spirit that they were doing with any other crime, and as people consider. But to rush, if everyone may be a hate crime, I don't know. But I think we have to, we can see how it plays out. The information being out there is one issue, but how it's disseminated and what it truly is is a separate issue. We don't want to yell "Sharky Beach" because it's not a Sharky Beach. We have to be careful.
I thank you, and I agree. But, you know, I think what might have happened in this instance with these few incidents clustered together is that the police commissioner forgot to tell the active city manager, who then, you know, did not tell the council members.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman.
Yes, I really don't like your mischaracterization and statement, you know, pooh-pooh things. I was very careful to walk the fine line that Councilman Mandel had mentioned, between creating hysteria and addressing the facts. So to form you this feeling, I'm disappointed in you.
Liz Dondi. Good evening.
I have a letter I'd like to read you. I was here on October 3rd and addressed this counsel. I am legally blind and was unable to see you or to even see your outline. I was extremely uncomfortable, and I came across that way. So I am here today to rectify the impression you may have gotten from my appearance. When I was here, I asked you if you knew about RAD and our four senior buildings. And by the length of time it took you to respond, I assume you heard about RAD, but really didn't know what RAD is. I have prepared a short version of what RAD is, the downfalls, how it may affect the city of Long Beach, what could go wrong, and so with the hope you will find this educational. I believe I am well qualified to do this. I am a college graduate with two masters, and I have been studying RAD, which is the Rental Assistant Demonstration, since it became available to me seven months ago. I don't go by what other people say, I do my own research, and I form my own conclusions. I have read everything that is on RAD, both from the internet, the paper, and any other source, the TV, whatever I never hands on. Even though I am legally blind, I do have special equipment to enable me to do all this. RAD is a new program, and like any new programs, there will be setbacks and mistakes. If we prepare ourselves ahead of these downfalls, we will be in much better shape if and when they occur. I am not an advocate. I don't want to stop the RAD program, and I don't even know if I could. It may be very good for Long Beach housing, but I believe there is not enough information at this time to draw a positive conclusion. However, I am passionate about the RAD process being done right. All I am asking from this council is that you keep oversight, and maybe appoint a member to guide us so we can keep this upward. I am not politically minded. I don't know how to go about doing this. But I do feel that if we keep it above board, it will help to be sure that everything goes along as it should. I thank you very much, and I do have the oldest view to look at.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and we have some scheduling issues with us getting together with the housing authority, and I think we're scheduled to get together after Election Day is when some of the members of the housing authority are free, so we should be being informed. As you know, it's an issue for the housing authority, but I know all five of the council members really want to understand what is happening, and what is going to affect, potentially affect the residents of our housing. So thank you for the information.
Thanks for providing these concerns.
Just a quick question, if anyone from our administration just sent some kind of follow-up information to this committee, I do not think you can send a message.
So there's, I think there was, is there any information on here? The address or email, yeah, the address.
Yeah, I have additional information, only for the bare minimum. So if you need any other information about what happened to other RAD conversions across the country, I have all that information.
If it's possible, Ryan, could you please take her information so that we can make sure that she's aware of the fact that we are meeting?
It's not on the court here, Ryan, so you're going to have to get it separately. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Dean Fiore.
Good evening, Dean Fiore, Long Beach. Moira, I agree with you.
Thank you.
And I know a number of other people, no disrespect, but it was extremely disappointing the way the incident was handled this weekend. A lack of communication, and more sadly than anything, and I won't belabor the point, was that you don't communicate amongst each other. So I don't know who's managing up, managing down, we're just not managing at all. So that's all that's there on that subject. I would like to know, at this stage of game, we are one year to the day of the election last year, we're as city manager won and checked out on November 8th. So I will ask, one year later, where are we with a city manager and a comptroller? So I will ask, one year later, where are we with a city manager and a comptroller? Where are we in this process? It's like one year.
We continue to move forward. I don't know if anyone else wants to. We've been doing, checking references and...
We're running down to a shortlist, we're checking references on the finalists.
How many finalists do we have?
I think just saying the shortlist is good enough.
Yeah, very short.
Can we expect an answer by the end of two weeks at the next meeting? So one check, one miss, so one check you know, one...
I'm gonna say, we'll just have to know how long the background checks. If there's a firm...
We have a good chance of getting background checks.
There is a covering, secured fashion firm that does background checks. And so as quick as that goes, we may.
Excuse me.
There are a couple of issues at play here. One of the important things is we, now that the council has identified candidates, I've spoken with the firm to do the background checks and there are releases that they are sending me by tomorrow, which have to go to the candidates so that they can sign waivers so that we can do a thorough background check. So as soon as we get those back, it will be a full pledge.
So the idea is just to let, again, this goes back to communication with everything that happens here. We're making progress. We're closer to getting somebody hired. Maybe there's a good chance we may have somebody before the end of this year? Possibly. We'll have background checks, I hope, before that before the end of this year.
Also.
Okay. Yeah, communicating afterwards sometimes will alleviate a lot of problems that you probably face. We don't talk to one there. And you should, we need to talk there to the residents, not necessarily after all this. Mr. Bendel, just to your answer, maybe you should ask Mr. Agostec for a copy of his contract. He might have a better shot at getting it in its entirety. If you can't get it, you're out of the process. Mr. Lynch.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I understand that Chamber would help. The Civic Association this year will be trying to help the city, gain this city a little bit more holiday decorated. I know you're all aware, we'll be doing briefs as civic associations jointly on the beach, on the boardwalk, on the beach. I thank you for approving that. And hopefully the residents will get a, have a nice time. Two of them in the boardwalk, you'll check in and out. That will be going on December 3rd and December 2nd. And again, the Civic Association can be in any assistance I can speak for mine. We're happy to try to help that whenever we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for coordinating and organizing the brief program. That's it for me. Doc Bridgens.
Good evening. Doctor Bridgens, the address is street, Long Beach. I wanted to question, well, I guess you all know that the Cherry Valley Sandwich Company or whatever is coming to Beach Street on Bridge. Where they supply the knives and whatnot. I don't mind the business, I don't mind the sandwiches. I do mind 24 hours. That is not necessary to sell sandwiches. And I feel bad for the guys on New York Avenue, local guys, that are gonna have competition to block away. Is there any way that you can restrict the hours of the sandwich shop? We already live in the Jedi all night long. We don't need... And who's gonna buy sandwiches at 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning? If there's any way that you can restrict the hours for quality of life? I spoke with a lot of my neighbors and they all feel the same way. We don't need the 24-hour sandwich shop. The business is fine, but limited. 12 o'clock is fine. I know, I won't be... There's ice cream at the other end, but not that.
I have to say, I don't know the answer to that question. We can restrict it, I don't know. Maybe put a council department. Or we can certainly look into that. At the Western Neighbors Meeting, they announced this was...
Yes.
I don't think they've come for a parking variance or anything because they have a little parking lot, so it's...
The place is getting ripped apart.
It is, okay.
They have...
That was my question.
The chairs and tables, file boxes, all put into the, are at the elements front of the beach house. All over. People's files, you know, I lived there, so I could see it. It's a mess.
Okay. So then we'll send someone down there to take a look and see if they're violating any of the ordinances.
They put in a big tractor-trailer truck in the parking lot against the building now. It's just a mess there. I know they have it to a business mind, but not all night long.
Maybe as a general, just informational or counsel could look into the city's ability to restrict hours of jurisdiction in the city.
I hope so.
I could run it through the chain. All I can say is like there are places like Beach Bagel that are open 24 hours a day. They sell sandwiches. It's such a complicated situation where we're telling someone to stay open for X amount of hours and not fly the same scrutiny to like Beach Bagels.
Well, see, that's what happened. With 7-Eleven, it all started, so it's gotta end. Otherwise, whatever, you know what I mean?
We do, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I will send someone to take a look at that lot and see what's going on in terms of trash and garbage. John J. Dean. Mr. Dean.
John Dean, Long Beach. Once again, I want to speak about the traffic control that's needed on West Park Avenue from New York Avenue to the water. I think council will be more than helpful. And then we'll check and signs are back. Listen, I've spoken to this now for quite a few meetings. I'm gonna say again, I will thank you. I understand that they're gonna do some sort of mess of county project on this. But in the meantime, and I did meet with some people in traffic control. They've offered, but not been done yet. But I'm asking for yield pedestrians. That's a law in New State. The dead greens have, I think, a right of way, but not on West Park Street. Also, I think there's a law that says you must block intersections. I think we could put some signs up there, which is also off the top of traffic control. That's not gonna be here. The other thing is that I understand that they said they came for crosswalks because they don't yet have traffic control devices at these corners of most of the two-way streets. Up to them, like Delaware, Maryland, the house, you know, the firehouses and the two-hills. But all those streets in the middle, they don't have it. And what we can do, and I've read about this, is in addition to putting the signs up, we can actually put printed signs. And it happened somewhere else, also in Long Beach, where they had the traffic control or some other sort of yield sign. We can print it right into the middle of the intersection. And what that'll do is that'll slow down the traffic, make it safer, which is what we're trying to do, get people driving speed. Instead of 40 miles an hour, they're driving now. Thank you for the traffic control, the special bar. And that silly light that's on the New York Avenue, that's supposed to be a stop sign. The people that aren't supposed to go through, which they do, and nobody stops anyhow. It's working. That's the rule of the building, it's silly. But anyhow. We're just looking for state, trying to avoid the first fatality in that area. There has been a lot of damage to personal property. I've experienced quite a bit. And I just wish that there's some sort of action to be taken. And it doesn't take a lot to put up a couple of signs. It doesn't take a light to put down a little pattern that says, "Yield pedestrians." People just want to have to read it. Make it safer. Anybody that doesn't think that we need to make it safer, I think they must not be looking at Long Beach rather than one of the several. Just wanna thank you. And once again, hate crimes is a terrible thing. And the response to it is extremely disappointing to me. And this wonderful lady appointed us to be honest.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. A couple of weeks ago, the legislative board was here and a letter to go out to Nassau County, to traffic engineers to look at that load and see what we can do to make it safer for pedestrians. Mr. Dean.
Sorry, Mr. Coleman?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Bendo. I feel very dear in mind, but given Mr. Bendel's comments, I'm not sure that he is enjoying it. Mr. Bendel's comments. That the city manager, or acting city manager in this case, can stand by between that no such record exists is quite frankly disturbing. Clearly, a record exists. Mr. Bendel has seen a portion of the record. It's a agreement between the city and one of its employees. Mr. Bendel has seen a part of that document. So we're really not sure what it... And it refers to another document, so we're really not sure what the nature of the document is. But nevertheless, it's a document, a official document in the city. So that document, as far as I can tell by the nature of it, as I understand it, is not subject to destruction on the grandeur of record retention schedules. So clearly, it should be somewhere. The plainly false assertion that no such record exists cast doubt upon the city's understanding of its very fundamental responsibility regarding record retention and more importantly, the city's obligation under the FOIL law to disclose those records in order to promote transparency and to instill confidence in the public that their government is being run on the other end. Clearly, you guys don't care about those things. This is especially so when it comes to a document that concerns the expenditure of public funds. I can think of a few documents that are more important for the city to keep accurate track of and to, of course, provide when requested under the FOIL laws than those records that pertain to the expenditure of public funds. Based on what I understand, based on Mr. Bendel's comments, this document, he's been seeking, been getting, to run around, been making the chase scale for about two weeks or so. He had a conversation with Mr. Agostec about this document. Mr. Agostec acknowledged that he has a copy of the document, a personal copy of the document. Now, Mr. Agostec is the city's chief legal officer and he also wears the hat of the FOIL appeals officer. Based upon the events described by Mr. Bendel, clearly, Mr. Agostec should be aware that the city has somehow failed to maintain a vital record that is under the law obligated to retain. Mr. Agostec's response, as I understand it, is that he agreed to show Mr. Bendel the record conditionally, but he would not provide him a copy of it. Now, Mr. Agostec, the city's chief legal officer and a FOIL appeals officer, has had brought to his attention the fact that the city has been lost or seriously misapprehended it's due to be retained or disclosed a certain record. And Mr. Agostec has a copy of that record. He has acknowledged that. His correct course of action should have been to provide a copy of that record to the city, if not to Mr. Bendel directly, because this is a situation that can't go unremedied. This is a basic thing. I don't know how Mr. Tagg, if he would straightface a claim that no such record exists. The record exists. I have one feature right here. I'm not the city. I got my hands on it. Clearly, you guys should be able to get your hands on it.
Thank you, Ms. Bendo. And I want to thank you for the information because Councilman Bendel has not shared this information with us about Mr. Agostec says he has the document. He's gonna show it to him.
I can't...
I appreciate you telling us.
I can't believe that. There may be some choice issues there.
You just told us, you just told us that Mr. Agostec said he has the document and will show it to Councilman Bendel.
Yeah.
So thank you for informing us.
All right, well, I can't, again, I can't tell Mr. Bendel what he should or shouldn't tell you guys.
I wasn't speaking.
I agree with that.
I was thanking you for letting us know.
So anyway.
I said your time is up, Mr. Bendo. Your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Eddie Vernon. Good evening, Eddie.
Eddie Vernon, Mrs. Lynn Peake. On the September 28th meeting, I asked about the audit report for fiscal year 2017, which at the time was not released. While correcting my inconsistencies, as Mr. Aramo says it, Ms. Hightower said the audit report would be completed by the end of October. So my question is, where is the audit report and why has it not yet been released?
The audit report is due November 11th. Are you talking about the state?
No, I'm talking about 2017 financial...
Yeah, that's due at the end of this week. At the end of this week, yes.
It was due back in March, yes.
And he got an extension from the state. And we'd multiply it with the State Department of Accounting and it'll add to us by the end of the week.
But with all these excuses and continually buying time, how can we trust that it will be done by the end of this week? And are you aware that the city could lose all of its federal funding by not releasing this audit report? This includes the Community Block Development Grant, which most recently the council awarded to fund food banks at the local parish, and transportation funding which subsidizes our buses. Do you want to put at risk these essential government services that protect our most at-risk residents? And I think that's a question the council needs to grab with. The reason I care so much about this audit report is because the audit report reveals vital financial information, such as how much money the city has in its bank, how much its deficits are, how much its debt is. And the residents, bondholders, and other stakeholders need to know this information. So my final question is, do you have something to hide? Because I see no reason for this audit report to have not been released yet. Thank you.
As the city may expect, we don't have it. And when we do have it, it will be released. Because we don't want those things in jeopardy, as you described. Now, Ms. Eileen Heschin. Good evening.
Eileen Heschin, Long Beach. I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about. But the first thing I want to say is, Jamie at the Chamber of Commerce, Dean is speaking for the civics, and Allison speaking about her ideas about the lights that several people agreed with tonight, makes me ask once again, why don't you allow the residents more input? Let us be on committees. Let us talk to you. Allison's idea, she came up with it three months ago, would have negated all the discussion about lights tonight. Let us be part of it. There are a lot of people in this town who know a lot, who have a lot to give, three of them are up here tonight. I saw an ad or a thing about the test being given to the, a new, I believe, position, Director of Operations for the City of Long Beach. You know what I'm talking about, everybody, right? Yes? Yes, okay, thank you. Is this a newly created position? Yes. Is it in the organization chart?
Yes, it's in the budget and the organization.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, I couldn't find it. Thank you very much for letting me know that.
It's not in the budget, I checked today.
How is it listed in the budget? Can somebody get back to me and tell me where it is in the budget? Thank you very much. In the test piece of paper here, it says all candidates must have permanent status in Long Beach as a superintendent or director, which means I obviously can't apply for this position. But doesn't that really narrow the field if you have to be a director or a superintendent already? So I'm wondering, how many applications did you get for the position? Nobody answered?
No. The council will be involved.
Is this a civil service matter? Is it an exempted position? Excuse me? I don't know the answer to that question, but it's a tested position, so it would go through civil service as far as I know. Does that mean it's union? I don't know the answer to your question. Because all the duties listed seem to be exempt. I don't know, this is very weird to have this come up suddenly. A new position. When we're broke. And when Mr. Bendel mentioned other positions that he didn't know anything about, you started to open up new jobs, giving people raises. When we're broke, I don't get it. I'll go on... I'll go on to my next thing. Although Jay Gussler said it better than I can, I have also foiled for several different things, including Mr. Agostecy, as well as information about some of the payments that went out to people who did not separate. I have not received responses. I know there's a timing to it. The days are up. I haven't gotten my response, and I don't know why. I have also heard that documents don't exist from the Director of Transportation, and it makes me think, seriously, if they don't exist, then somebody is really lax. If you have cars and you don't know who's driving them, it's not, it's spending my tax dollars very poorly and not keeping track of where that money is going.
That's your time, Aileen Heschin. Thank you.
Before you move, Aileen, I just want to ask a question. How long have you been waiting for the FOIL documents?
One of them is due today. I stopped in and saw the person who's in charge of it, but I had another one that was out as well, a while ago.
Okay, so can anyone speak to?
And I did speak to the director, several directors, asking about, I didn't get good answers. So I'm still waiting. But I believe there are other FOILs out that are not being answered that are older than mine, so.
So, Council, I guess, can you just speak to the FOIL process so that the audience has some sense of the process and what's happening and why there should possibly be a delay? When this is their right, they have the right to have this information, right to access the information.
So there's a FOIL law in place, and I think as was mentioned, Mr. Agostecy, my boss, is the FOIL appeals officer, but I believe FOILs go through Records and Access Officer in each individual department. So if you send a FOIL request, it typically goes to whichever department you're looking for information from. There's a time certainly where you're supposed to get something back, if you don't.
Five days, yes. I did get an acknowledgement that it had been received. I carried it into the office.
Right.
I have since learned that it shouldn't stand that day, but anyway, they sent me a thing within five days.
Right, and then if you're.
And then twenty more days after that fifth day, I should have a response, so that's what I'm waiting for.
And if you haven't, then there's another appeal, I guess an appeal you have to make. It's kind of a process.
It's a process.
Right, see, here's my, that's my point. It's a process, but we shouldn't, as a resident, you shouldn't have to go through that. And here's the reason why. This information should be open, all right? All of you pay taxes, you come here every month, twice a month, you're coming here because you're asking questions. You have the right to ask questions. That's the whole purpose of the meeting, is for public engagement. If we're not providing information to residents, then we should all go home right now, because that's the whole purpose. We're supposed to engage, and a part of that engagement is making sure that you have access to information. Yes, we can't tell you everything, because obviously in any organization, we can't do that, but because we need to protect you. But in certain situations, general information, you should have access to that information. Anyone that's in this room should have access, in the same way that we should have access to information. Why? Because it's about transparency, open communication. That's how we build our relationships between all of us who are here, who are part of the administration, and the public. And we have to work on that. And what I'm hearing tonight is that documents were asked for by a council member, and he's not even, he doesn't have access to the information. I'm also hearing that there is just basic information that you're asking for, and other residents are not getting that information. I'm also hearing that in many cases, in terms of an audit report, this is something simple that everyone should have access to that's been delayed, and that's okay, because that's the process. We respect that. But at a certain point, there should be some communication going out to the public saying, listen, we understand that there are a lot of people who have asked about this before. Therefore, we need to let, to inform you that this is the extension. We should have the information. It's forthcoming. We have to work on direct communication. We're not getting that done, and I'm just saying it out loud because we need to say it. We need to come clean with the residents and say, we're not getting it done. But now, we have to go back to the table and say, how can we get it done? Because we need to regain your trust. And we can't do that if we keep telling you. We're not getting it done. How long are we going to keep saying we're going to get back to you? Because you're tired of it, and I'm tired too. I'm tired of sitting here when people are asking for simple things that they should ask. Ms. Dunne shouldn't have to come here again. She should have had some kind of communication. But she found a way to come here because she cares about the city. Like, everyone else that's sitting on this stage, we all care about the city. So all of us, we have to make a commitment to each other that we're going to work together, I'm going to get the information out, we're going to do this thing right. I'm sorry, but I need to say this.
I would like to thank you for making that statement, and I'd also like to say that in spite of sometimes what has been said to the people here, we all care about the city. That's why we come here, week after week. Thank you very much.
John Knight.
Good evening, everybody. John Pan, 613 West Wallman Street. To build off Councilwoman Moore's comments about not getting it done and the topic du jour of a test being taken and somebody being hired for Director of Operations, if you allow this to happen, quite frankly, you're not getting it done. You're doubling down on nepotism, corruption, lack of qualified candidates for a position. This position was very clearly scripted up for a specific person. That specific person has failed in their job and failed the residents of this city on numerous occasions. We should not be hiring anybody of any import until we get a full-time professional city manager. My hat is off. My hat is off to Commissioner Tagney, Acting City Manager Tagney. This is a yeoman's job. Nobody can expect to do what he is doing and do it perfectly, but quite frankly, this council should not be sitting idly by while these things happen that you know flies in the face of transparency and good government. It might not be customary for the council to get involved in decisions like this, but you damn sure that the blue wave that swept New York yesterday ain't going to sweep through this city next year if stuff like that is allowed to continue to happen. The Royal Lester.
That's going to be a tough act to follow. Thank you, John. Royal Lester, Long Beach. First of all, I really don't like criticizing Mr. Tagney, because I happen to like Mr. Tagney, and I think he's done a wonderful job. But, Mr. Tagney, the idea that you didn't tell the city council members because you were afraid of creating hysteria, doesn't fly. You said you didn't, they weren't informed, and you said you didn't want to create hysteria.
That was me going to do, that was me explaining to Ms. Goodman, saying that I confused you. I didn't confuse you.
But the people members weren't, that's correct, weren't informed.
That's correct.
But, you know, you were on the school board, the superintendent. If something like this happened on the school board and the superintendent didn't inform you, all of us would have gone crazy. And I mean, for the city council, I mean, they're not as careful people. They should have been informed. And I am saying you're busy. I really do. And I think what you're doing is just a lie, a lie. But feeling the city council more than anybody, let them know if something like this comes up. Let them know. Number two, the lights. I was listening here, I listened to Mr. Lynch. I'm confused. I don't know what happened with the lights. I really don't know what. We are spending $16,000 for. I understand that it's a contribution, but like I tell my kids, you don't flush even a nickel down the toilet. You don't do it. You don't spend money that you don't have yet. These lights are supposed to last ten years. Now, I know they didn't. I don't know if we have a warranty or anything like that, but I still, I bought Christmas lights too. I still can't understand $16,000, and I still don't know what went wrong. And what I really don't understand is, every year when I put my Christmas lights away, I know which ones work and which ones don't work. And to wait till the last minute, and, Miss Moore, I mean, you know, you tried, you tried, but to wait till the very last minute when you say, well, we can't do anything now, it's too late, if we don't move tonight, we're not going to have Christmas lights. That's kind of crazy. You guys knew about it last year. You know when you took the lights down that they weren't good. You didn't just take them out of storage and find out that they were no good? It's all, you know, it's proper planning. What can I tell you? Number three, Mr. Bendo, the fact that you have to ask, that you have to ask for things is absolutely mind-boggling. And it really bothers me, and we talk about transparency in this city, and you're asking for a contract that was entered into with the city. Okay? You're not attacking an individual. You're not, you know, it's not, you're questioning an individual's performance or anything like that. You're asking about a contract. And what do I hear? I hear that I'm trying to quiet you. Oh, you shouldn't be asking these questions. It's ridiculous, you shouldn't be asking the questions. You're a city councilman. You were elected to this position. Of course, you're supposed to be asking these questions. And I'm asking, you say that a firm's being secured to do a background check? Firm's being secured? You've known about this for how many months? It's been like sixteen months, and now you're securing a firm to do a background check? Come on.
Michael Delory.
Hi, Delory, Long Beach, New York. I just wanted to congratulate Councilwoman Ascending, Elizabeth Miller. I saw her earlier. She left for Senator Kaminsky on the reelection. I have a lot of issues, not going to get through in three minutes, but here it goes. To the financial statement, Ms. Hightower said they would be available by the end of October. Those are her words, after I asked it, not my words. Is Albrecht Vigio the accounting firm who will be issuing these financial statements? Number three, the sign on the boardwalk at Riverside Boulevard says something about the National Park Service. Hydro flushing. I've seen some correspondence tonight, a lot of residents are asking, and threw people out in the video wave. I think it's easier, since it's a two-week schedule from November 7th to November 21st, if it's going to be done in quadrants. Maybe a notification, a general announcement, let's say the East Park section. I don't know if this was done. It might have been done. People have been commenting today. These are just suggestions. It goes hand in hand with the storm that was approaching a couple of weeks ago on Friday on, you did, okay, just Nassau County. The storm, you've heard it on News 12, move your cars out of low-lying areas. I don't know if the city did it. I think it would have been a good idea to use that voicemail system that I used to get from Land Taurus, Citywide, saying a snow emergency. If it's not being used because it's an expense, maybe you can use it. Just better communication, that's all. Because you will get complaints. I'm sure Ms. Moreno is well aware of it. Taught me very well about flushing and hydro flushing. The Financial Restructure Board, $5 million that was started by Senator Kaminsky, where are we with that? Is it a process? Secondary and last suggestion suggested by other people, not me. The crosswalks in the center of town, from, let's say, Laurelton Boulevard to Long Beach Waterline Road, going from Crossing Park Avenue. Some are favored, possibly, I don't know what the Neptune Boulevard crosswalk looks like, I don't know what the Lindell Boulevard crosswalk looks like. This is the areas where people go back and forth to school. If some of them are done, I think there should be a program in the springtime at least to at least address it. I think that's for safety reasons as well. I shouldn't be the one looking at these. I'll show you guys a little bit better. But now I want to go to positive here. New York Avenue and Olive Street. Lieutenant Ryan, Richie Corbin, other people, they did raise that stop sign, and they did re-strike the front and the Olive Street with the New York Avenue sign. And they painted the word "stop." That was a very favorable result of just that small work, because from where I live, I could see cars just busting through that stop sign. And one morning, about maybe a month ago, I just happened to get in my car, and it was an unmarked car to the left of me, let's say, black Ford Explorer. And felt safe, it was great getting in my car. All of a sudden, the lights go on, and he nailed somebody for going to that stop sign. So these are, there's a lot of problems I heard tonight. I don't know how you can address a lot of them, but I really think something should be seriously looked into, especially the financial statements. And we'll start with that.
Thank you, Mr. Delory.
Thank you for allowing me there some time.
The, just so you know, promo call did go out today, informing residents about that.
Flushing?
Hydro flushing, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good. Any idea what the sign on the boardwalk at Riverside Boulevard and National Park Service?
That is a required sign for people's extension, that's for the United States Park Service, that, that beach that we now have, that was refurbished by the Army Corps of Engineers. One requirement is with that sign up.
Okay. And, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Allison Lashen.
It's a family issue. I'm taking care of it.
No, I don't want to interrupt.
I'm entitled to text my family.
Yeah, no, you totally are. You totally are.
Please, concern.
Hope everything's okay at home. So, okay, Allison Lashen. The crosswalk painting stuff, we actually already have money for that. We were awarded several different grants over the past few years, and that's actually one of the things I wanted to ask. So what Mike was just talking about, like, there was money for that stuff. 2014, City of Long Beach was awarded $1,638,51 for the downtown to the boardwalk resilient connectivity projects under a Transportation Alternatives Program grant via the New York State DOT. These do have expiration dates on them, tap grants, so where is that? We have yet to have any kind of outreach? We have yet to have CMC schematics on that?
We need to have a match that we came forward, is that correct?
Well, then, it's going to expire.
It's not going to expire. We're currently extending all.
You've got to extend it.
We confirm, we're pretty stable, we're the closest. I report to the state every month on this, Allison, and reply in terms of the tip where the money is put for each year, where it's out for some money, and we've been talking with them around the schedule that they are fine.
Okay. And there are several other grants that we've gotten to be here. I just remember Sherman really, you know, taking a lot of photo ops on them. There was some funding that Kaminsky got us, they would like half a million for white lanes on Park Ave, just like bits of funding here and there, and I believe there's, oh, definitely over $2 million since 2013, possibly $3 million that just accumulated over the years. So I'm just saying, if someone's interested in striping crosswalks, well, it's not like the money has never existed.
Excuse me, Allison, but that money, as John said about the other money, it's being held off for the next year. We've talked to the state about it until the time when we have a matching.
So we're waiting on matching funds because this isn't a priority, safety? I've got one question for you. That's a question for our acting city manager, who's also a police. This should, our health should be a pri, this is not just safety or like leisurely bike lanes. We, this is a public health issue. leisurely bike lanes, we, this is a public health issue.
I try and stand that, but funding is a crucial issue for us, and...
So is, so is the quality of, like, so is life. So, I want to call up on an email I sent October 21st. Has this administration considered utilizing a fleet management information system to track, to track the employee vehicles, mileage, costs, and so on, all the things in the FOIL requests that Ali Heshin and other residents haven't received? Is anyone interested in having an updated act or master inventory list of the city fleet? Anyone up here interested in that? Maybe a list of vehicle assignments to departments and employees? Don't we think that's important? Perhaps a written framework for motor vehicle risk management policies and procedure. These are things that your friend, Jack Sherman, has just, you know, unveiled in Nassau County, and thinks he's God's greatest gift for doing so. Yet, he was here, he never did. So, I'm curious, moving forward, are you guys interested in having these things?
We are, and it was discussed during the budget process. Thank you, Ms. Blanchard.
And I would say finally, like, it's pretty clear, it's been a year. You failed at your job, Aramo. You failed at your job as president.
That's casting my name, thank you.
You should really consider stepping down, not just from new president, vice president, but from city council, and that Michael Tagney should be removed as the acting city manager.
Thank you, Ms. Blanchard.
Good evening. Sam Pinto. A few points to speak to you tonight. First of all, in regards to Councilman Bendo, Sam Pinto Long Beach, Bendo's questions about personnel actions, as well as a few comments about this new position being created. I lived in a budget action that this should be created. I did look in the charter. It says that at every regularly scheduled meeting, the city council and the public will be made aware of personnel changes by the city manager. I know that we have a practice of doing only the first of the month, but to that, that is all that is expressed within the charter for personnel changes. It says they can hire, city manager is the option to hire or fire, or give, you know, promotion as, as within his or her control. But the process of a legislative doctrine is our city charter, I'm sorry, is our city budget. Our budget is the way that we create or abolish positions. So, in regards to giving raises or new positions that Mr. Bendo was questioning, it could have come in front of the council, unless it was already a C and C. But a new position that was not budgeted, to my understanding, has to be created by the resolution of the council. That also goes for a new position that was not budgeted, director of opposition, operation position. If I'm wrong, you can correct me, but I do have some information on that. So, if that's so, that council should be, I guess, in the mix on this. In regards to the incidents this weekend, there wasn't one incident that I was made aware of, it was two incidents in regards to BB guns. I lived on B Street, Riverside Rennet, sort of the Jewish dormitory. I'm also very involved in Jewish community. We didn't find out till later about all this. It's kind of upsetting that we have to find out so deep into the process through social media compared to getting a notification from the, from the city, or even as a stakeholder, not being told that there's an event or an incident that happened. I don't know if it was to include teenagers, I don't know if it was a hate crime. I guess I'll probably make that investigation, and I don't know if they can go the direction either way, so they do their, their investigation as well. But what I do think would have been good is that maybe letting the city, the residents, or key stakeholders know during probably the initial steps that this is made aware of, there's two events. I find there was a BB gun shooting on a Friday night, and I find again, it happened on Saturday, and I live within a three-block radius, as a member of the civic and as a member of other organizations, maybe the city can reach out to these stakeholders. There's literally a sign in front of my house that says, this is a neighborhood watch community, and I know if I'm watching my dog, and I know that there's a black car that was shooting people BB guns, maybe I'll be a little bit more vigilant in the process. So, just a suggestion. I know you don't tell everybody, but maybe the key stakeholders in the community, that they can make sure they can have their people be more vigilant. I would appreciate that. And last thing, I'm a member of the Bisha Bay Civic. They've done a lot of active citizen medical care, was a big topic recently, the most recent election, I know, was the city council election. My question is, does the city have any update on what's going on in medical services? Have there been any changes brought to attention of the city that the residents may be involved in? Because it's important, our medical care is important. The medical processes that are reported in town is important as much to the funding. So, if the city can give anything to that, it'd be really important. Nothing, there's nothing if you are seeing modifications or changes coming out in medical care, in medical services?
Nothing.
You guys aren't involved, I'm hoping, right? I'm sorry. Are you involved?
Last week, we were asked to tend to be with South Nassau Community Hospital. They are making some changes to the plans, they're putting a presentation together, and shortly they will be sending over a public table to people in Long Beach to go over the changes in that plan. They just kind of drew it at a high level with us, and they're putting together a whole presentation of some of the changes that they're making. It still keeps to the same basic concept of the medical arts pavilion, and bringing in, you know, regular doctors and things, but a little different makeup of the property. So, they will be presenting that to the public as soon as they're finished with all that, the warrants and things.
Thank you. Ms. Norrigan.
Norrigan, Long Beach. I just have two issues. I notice a pattern of lack of communication within the city towards each other and towards residents. And one of the things that I kind of was upset about was, the last meeting was on October 16th, and then on the 20th, we had the Sandy. And I only found out that there was a remembrance at 3:45 on October 27th via Facebook. I'm wondering why on the October 16th meeting was there not an invitation extended to all the residents to attend the Boardwalk ceremony? And why we had to find out via Facebook? Or maybe why I'm not signed up for robocalls, maybe there was a robocall sent out, we don't really know. But who organized the event? Is there anybody that is responsible for, you know, just posting it on Facebook and not letting us know on October 16th meeting? We know it's happening every year, but frankly, I don't think we need one anymore, but that's just my personal opinion. But October 16th should have been when we were told when and where to meet, because sometimes it's Kennedy Plaza, and sometimes, well, I guess now it's at the Boardwalk. So, that's my first issue. The other lack of communication I'm seeing is from personally, as well as the lack of returns on FOILs. And I've asked before about, did everybody here receive the receiving and claims head information specifically for the exams that have not separated? Have we received that?
I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
The receiving and claims report that shows, I will use Rob Agostecia as an example, Rob Agostecia's position when he was hired, in his case, I don't know if he terminated or resigned or what he, you know, the sick page, the breakdown. So, then there was a list of exams that didn't separate, two have since separated. So, I believe, I have asked numerous times, if you guys have all received those report sheets?
Earlier in the beginning of the year, when this became an issue, we did receive, I think, hundreds of...
Exactly, hundreds of whatever. And I, I get that, that there is every year, it's not many, and I get police and fire are different, TSA are different. But the exams that didn't separate, the people who didn't separate, have you received those sheets?
I think so, I don't remember. I think it was beginning of the year.
Yeah, but it's still ongoing. No, I get it. So, okay, so, Mr. Mandel, have you sat in, oh, I noticed that your names are on. If you have each looked at the individual sheets, and like now is moving forward, understand like the breakdown formula that was used?
Since you asked me, and I can tell you, I believe, I can't speak to the other council members, I believe we've seen, received emails that had every attachment that was provided to every organization that's been looking into this. We will copy it, and while I'm , I reviewed it at the time, as I sit here now, eleven months later, I couldn't tell you specifically about any one individual, not one would be able to. But we did receive that.
But if I was to ask you, like, can you go and find X, Y, and Z, you actually could go through your thousands, and I threw you thousands of emails on it, and eventually find it for me, correct?
Try, I couldn't guarantee you I could find anything, but I could try my best.
If you were asked, okay. Because I have asked. And then my other question is that Mr. Agostecia actually, in reference to a question of Roy Lester had asked at either the July 3rd meeting or the following July meeting, would, Roy had asked something to the effect of, would we be able to get the list? And Mr. Agostecia stated that we could FOIL for it. I have FOILed for it numerous times, and I have now received the list and the written text. And that's just in reference to the lack of communication within the city and towards residents with the FOIL.
Thank you, Ms. Agostecia. All right, that's the end of the meeting. Thank you for coming, and we feel unsafe.